We have Ola. Thank you. Sorry, everyone. Hi, everyone. Welcome to Ola. It is 6:01, so I will get started. Notices hereby given that the City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses and Legal Affairs will hold a committee meeting on Tuesday, February 8th at 6:00 PM via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 for the purposes of taking the following action on the matters listed below. Notice that this meeting was posted on January 31st, 2022. At 12:58 PM, this meeting is being recorded. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Please click the link below to join the meeting, or click the link posted in the agenda to join the meeting, or go to the website zoom.us/join and enter webinar ID 87920935436, followed by the meeting password 644648. By telephone, participants can dial a toll-free phone number at 888-475-4499, or 877-853-5257. Toll-free to join the meeting when prompted after webinar ID noted above, and follow the instructions to join the meeting. In attendance this evening are the entirety of the Ola Committee, also in attendance, Councillor Hapworth, Councillor Marcello, and Councillor Watsonfeld. We also have from the City of Salem, we have Lisa Camerata, Jenna Eide, and Beth Renard. Thank you, everyone, for joining this evening. We have two items on the agenda for tonight. The first item is the municipal green building ordinance, follow-up from our meeting that we had a few weeks ago. And the second item is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2028, providing auxiliary aids and services for public meetings. If it is okay, or the will of the Committee, if the Committee is okay with taking the items out of order, I feel as though the auxiliary aid and services for public meetings will be a quick item, and we won't have Lisa wait around for the other item if we're okay with taking those out of order. Any objections? No? Okay. So, the first, or the providing auxiliary aids and services for public meetings, first I will ask, was everybody able to access the folder that had the order in there? Or, if you'd like, I can also pull it up on my screen this evening. But we all should be able to have access to it tonight. I can also share my screen since... See if this works. So, this order was submitted in council in either January or February 2022. I do remember this actually being submitted in council chambers, though. That was one of the few orders that I remember from in person, and sent to Ola. This was an item that was reported in the ADA Transition Plan that was submitted, I think, late December, early 2020. And one of the items was to expand the accessibility of public meetings. You may have noticed that at the bottom of our City Council meetings, for example, and our boards and commission meetings, there already is this language at the bottom, which says, "Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communication, such as sign language interpreter, an assistive listening device, or print material in digital format, or reasonable modification in program, services, policies, or activities, may contact the City of Salem ADA Coordinator as soon as possible, and no less than two business days before the meeting program or event." So, this ordinance will be adding that additional language, so basically codifying a process that we currently follow for the boards and commissions. I also asked, or I did ask for the City of Salem ADA Coordinator, which would be Ms. Camerata, to join today as well, in case there were any questions on the process, or, I guess, codifying this into ordinance. I will open it up now, I guess. I don't know, Lisa, if you had anything to add, or if anyone on the Committee has any questions.
I will just comment that, just in light of, you know, with the ADA Transition Plan, that's sort of on all of our radar screens, I think. I think just codifying this is really important. We have a Disabilities Commission meeting next Tuesday, so I'll actually put this on the agenda, so the group is aware that it's now codified as part of the ordinance. So, I think that the group will be very pleased, and I think it just goes in line with everything that we're trying to do to just continue to promote accessibility. I think what I will do in light of this as well, we don't get a lot of requests for this, but when we do, it's nice that we do have the funding to pay for it. We have paid for some interpretive services in the past, and we have purchased assistive listening devices using the funding from the Handicap Violation Fund. What I will do is just put, perhaps what I will do on the Disability Commission's website is just a notification, I'll put this on there, as well as just my contact information, and perhaps just a very simple form for someone to fill out, or information required, so that we would know what was needed, you know, assuming there's a request for such services. But overall, I think this is just, you know, just another indication that, you know, we're moving forward as far as providing accessibility.
Thank you. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. This is really great. I go to a lot of the Disability Commission meetings, and I know you are the liaison, have been. And so, I'm going to move that we refer this back to the council with a positive recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Councillor Cohen moved that this be referred to the council with a positive recommendation. Seconded by Councillor Varela. Councillor Dominguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask a question before we start the voting. I totally agree, it's a great overdue order that needs to be in place. But my question is about, let's go for the ADA Coordinator. If I may, the two-day business day that, the two-business day that we see on the order, is there a requirement that needs to be there? What happened is someone, by any chance, wanted to be part of the meeting, but they don't have a two-day window. Can they do any, any, can they request any special, maybe, permit in order for them to be part of? Because in some of the incidents, sometimes we have situations where we don't have the time to, maybe to wait for two days. Is there a requirement that needs to be in there? Or is there any window beside that that can be adjusted for any situation?
So, my first comment would be, some things we would be able to pull together within two days, so I don't know if that would be a big problem, but I mean, I think it would be nice to be able to prepare, right? Because sometimes, especially with sign language interpreters, that can be, they can be very difficult to not only find, but make sure they're available, and so you'd want to try to book something ahead of time. So, I hear what you're saying, depending on when a meeting is posted, or what the need is, we would try to accommodate it. I mean, I don't think, overall, I don't, the city as a whole, we're in the mindset of, we say no right away, we try to figure it out. So, I think the two-day window is there, so that, you know, it isn't five minutes before the meeting trying to get something, but I think we just need to be mindful that sometimes it's not possible to obtain the type of interpretive services that might be needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councillor Prozinski?
Madam Chair, my question is to our HI Director, Lisa Camerata. Lisa, does the interpreter have to be a licensed or a qualified interpreter to make it legal, or is it just someone that we believe that can, is it loose that someone we believe that can do the skills, and/or by law? I'm just thinking back to what I've had to go through in the past with a similar situation, that we had to, we had to have someone who was legally licensed to do so.
Yeah, you know, my first reaction is yes. I mean, I'll, you know, I'm happy to see my colleague Beth Renard is here, but I think she would agree. You know, it's even like with medical, sometimes, you know, I'm not trying to get sidetracked, but, you know, I know myself, I've offered to help people in situations, and, you know, at a hospital, but it needs to be someone who is certified. So, my, you know, unless, you know, say somebody wanted just some, like a language interpretation, if you had a friend there, that might suffice if the person was okay with that, but I think, especially with, we talk about sign language, we want someone who is certified, and, you know, I think we'd be more, more apt to, you know, follow that, to get someone who is certified. You know what I mean? Like, I can translate occasionally for people, and it works, and it's efficient, and it gets the point across, and, except for a few words here and there, but if it was something, especially for a meeting where it was something very specific, I think we would want to make sure that we had somebody who was actually a certified interpreter, whether it was for American Sign Language, or even a different language, or that sort of thing.
My follow-up question would be, is it okay if that person would provide their own interpreter, if they wished to do so?
So, they could. I don't think we can require that, though. You know what I mean? But if it was such short notice that we couldn't, and they found someone, I think we may want to offer to pay for it, you know what I mean? Because that is still our responsibility. But if someone said, you know, "Listen, I was able to find such-and-such, and we hadn't been able to do that," I think we would just want to make sure of their credentials, and try to just work through that and take care of it. I mean, I think the goal is, no, yeah, I mean, I think, like I said before, I think in line with the ADA Transition Plan, and how we're trying to really heighten our accessibility in all phases, I think we would try to make it work.
Thank you. I'm all go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor, then, is for this to be removed, I'm sorry, for this to be referred to the council with a positive recommendation. Roll call. Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Prozinski?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so pass 5 to 0, back to the council with a positive recommendation. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
All right. Good night, everyone. You're very welcome. Take care. Beth, I'm going to give five more times in the next hour. Talk to you later. Good night.
So, our second item on the agenda this evening is the Municipal Green Building Ordinance. So, this is the second time that this is in, and it has a longer title than that, I'm sorry for shortening the title. This is the second time that this is in Ola, and it is a follow-up to a few items that we had that were outstanding at our last meeting. So, I think we can probably start this off, I can pull up the draft to see where we are with the red lines, and go from there, start going through those, if that works for everyone. Okay, so now on my screen, we have, and again, this was, I did send out the link to this, I hope everyone was able to access, okay? Kind of trying out some new technology for this group, supposed to be email. So, we'll go through, I guess, the edits and revisions that we still need to discuss and take into consideration. The first one was around new construction renovation and additions. So, this was added, or language that was added it, had it by Jenna and Beth, after the conversation around buildings under 5,000 square feet, and utilizing or repurposing materials on the buildings. So, the additional language is, "In addition to the requirements set forth above that we reviewed previously, all new city-owned or leased buildings and major renovations under 5,000 square feet must incorporate sustainable building practices as applicable, including but not limited to, all projects must be designed and installed to maximize utility incentives, and all projects shall consider the repurposing, reuse, or recycling of building materials to the extent feasible." So, the way I'm reading this, I understand that it kind of hits that utility incentive item that we wanted to capture, as well as the repurposing and reuse of the building materials. Any discussion? Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I think this incorporates what we were all looking for, and very much appreciate Councillor Watsonfeld's bringing up the second part of using these kind of materials. 5,000 square feet would cover all sorts of things, even pump stations, so I think this is appropriate language. And is it appropriate to move that we accept this?
I'm thinking, so we do have a few items, we might...
Do it all together?
We might try to do it all together. We'll see.
Okay, I'm partial to that.
Okay. Councillor Hapworth, did you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did, but I think I'll save it for a comment later on down the line here.
Okay. Jenna?
I just noticed that, and it says 5,000 S feet, if you can just turn it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, we can move, we'll move to the next. So, in design teams, this was, I think this was actually added during our meeting last time, the accredited professional or other comparable accreditation, so we don't box ourselves into the lead accredited professional. And then this was, I think, Beth edit for changing it to policy and goals to ordinance. Any conversation there? Okay. The green infrastructure and permeable materials, this was another one that we added in at the last meeting, or edited and revised at the last meeting. Additionally, land management practices shall maximize or increase sustainable vegetation to mitigate urban heat island effects, and reduce flooding, and encourage stormwater infiltration. Councillor Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not being a member of the Committee, I spoke to both yourself and Jenna this morning, or this afternoon, about this. I think the goal is to discuss permeable surface materials here. Would it be appropriate to, I don't know, as I look, Jenna, you mentioned looking into the definitions, I don't know that, as I look even at the definitions, I see that we've sort of defined what permeable materials could be, and I think we all know what that is, but I think it might just be helpful to say something to the effect of the use of permeable materials, such as permeable concrete, pavers, and brick is encouraged at all municipal properties. But just curious on both Jenna's take there, and then other members of the Committee, to just lay that out. I think that my thought process there is that, you know, cities that have experienced climate change, like New Orleans, have been very strict about the use of permeable materials where it's appropriate, and where they're able to. I think, Jenna, as you mentioned, it's not, it's not appropriate for, like, roadway surfaces necessarily, but for places that people are walking, it can be something that can be very helpful. So, just wondering if we can define that, and just to say that it's encouraged, not that it's required, but that we encourage these sorts of materials.
I can speak.
Sure. Sorry, didn't have you to speak. Yes. Jenna?
Yeah, I had thought, under the definitions, we had put in permeable materials, but when I went back and checked, we hadn't. So, we could either, in the definitions, just say, you know, LID, or best management practices includes permeable materials, paving materials, or we could put it here, either one. I think the intent was to include it, it just didn't get included in kind of the list under the definition.
So, on the definitions, we do have the low impact, the LID, which is referenced up.
But we, in that, we didn't say specifically permeable materials. So, we could add, including, you know, as bookable, permeable materials.
So, for the LID definition, it's a land planning and engineering design approach to manage stormwater runoff as part of green infrastructure. LID emphasizes conservation and use of onsite natural features to protect water quality. And you would suggest possibly adding some sort of permeable statement here? So, LID emphasizes conservation and use of onsite natural features and permeable materials?
Yeah, put it here, or under best management, either one, so, because it references both.
Councillor Hapworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair, not being a member of the Committee, and I can't, I can't make this motion, but I just, looking at where that definition points back to, it's requiring the use of low-impact development. I don't know that with permeable materials, we would always be able to require that. So, I wonder if just laying that out is something that we encourage inside the ordinance, and just stating that we encourage the use of these materials, such as permeable concrete, pavers, and brick, right after the word reducing, right after the phrase reducing flooding, if that might make sense, that way we're not confusing or tying our hands to something that, I know there's some areas where we couldn't use, we would have to use asphalt or a non-p permeable concrete, I think, if I understand that right.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I'll move that we just expand that sentence to encourage stormwater infiltration and permeable materials when appropriate, because it's just encouraging, and so it's not a specific, you know, requirement or standard. I also do want to remind the group that Salem has also endured the effects of the climate crisis. Thank you.
So, suggestion of adding at the end of the first paragraph of Section 3, encourage stormwater infiltration and permeable materials when appropriate.
I want to second that motion.
Second it. Councillor Hapworth, did that, I guess, thoughts on that?
I think that that looks good. I would love to see just examples inside there, but I think the permeable materials we all get. I like to include examples, just as future bodies look, or future people looking at these ordinances would see what we were getting at.
Jenna, if you mentioned earlier that there may have been a definition of permeable materials, is that something that you might be able to pull up, or?
Um, we could. You know, you can use examples, but, you know, I, sometimes that ties you a little bit. I don't have, per se, a definition right handy.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You could put in commas up in where you were earlier, including but not limited to, and then the items that Jenna had mentioned that were permeable, we have to wear materials, including but not limited to, and Jenna can tell us what those are.
I think they, limited to porous, you know, it's porous paving, you know, porous concrete, and what else did you have, Councillor Hapworth, you had porous bricks?
Right, porous paving, concrete, and bricks.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to include that, so we can expedite this, because this is just an encouragement and not a specific standard.
Yep. Thank you. Councillor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. Not being a member of the Committee, I just am wondering if we should take a second look at exactly where that's placed grammatically. I'm, I'm not sure exactly that that's the exact correct location, but maybe that can be done after this point. I would probably move it just a little bit higher up, and I just wanted to also say that I'm in support of exactly what we've done here with defining, including but not limited to, the permeable materials. So, thank you for including it.
I'll read that, but move to Councillor Varela's comment.
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I just wanted to echo as far as what Jenna said, as far as, if we do put specifically concrete and bricks, if we do this, just to let everyone know, we are somewhat saying that, you know, permeable materials such as grass, anything vegetative, that's also permeable? So, that would be appropriate in some, you know, application? So, if we're doing this, we're limiting ourselves to concrete and bricks and basing rate. I'm just going to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, I think I have a clarification.
Yep.
So, I think, Councillor Watsonfeld, you brought a good point. So, this is about land management practice, which is really about your vegetation. This sort of requirement, and I sort of mentioned this to Hapworth, is really related to your stormwater regs. It's about paving. So, your land management practices is about how you manage your vegetation in your land. So, I think we'd probably put that down, you know, say, you know, you know, shall, you know, the city encourages, or however you wanted to do that, the use of, you know, permeable materials, included but not limited to. So, I think, Councillor, that gets to yours, this is specifically talking about paved areas.
So, would you recommend moving this to the, I mean, we're talking about, the next sentence talks about paved areas over 5,000 feet?
Right. Yes.
Do we want to limit it to the 5,000 feet, though?
I think you could just add it, and you don't have to put a requirement, you could just say, for any size, or does something like that work? Or? All projects?
City projects must meet, if the new paved area is over, and for any size, projects requiring paving? Does that make sense?
Requiring impervious surface.
We have to add the encourage sentence, though, because that's not down here. How am I doing, Beth?
Good. Two typos.
Okay.
Utilizing porous.
All city projects must meet the federal requirements for stormwater regulations if the new paved area is over 5,000 square feet, and for any size projects requiring impervious surface, it is encouraged to utilize permeable materials, including but not limited to porous paving, concrete, and bricks when appropriate?
P-O-R-O-U-S.
Thank you. That was an English nature. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. So, I amend my motion to reflect the new wording.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, we'll go on to the next amendment that was made. I think, I'm trying to remember if this was one that was during the conversation, I think this was one during the conversation last time. So, the City of Salem's Purchasing Department shall create, within three months of the date of the ordinance, so just adding kind of some guidelines around there to get started on the purchasing, preferable purchasing program. No other changes there. This one was voted last time, for 5 to 0, to change the waste reduction, to add for projects involving site work or refurnishing, the city shall seek to restore, repurpose, or recycle materials and furniture, no, I'm sorry, what was voted on was to strike this last sentence. The city shall continue to work to reduce recycling contaminations by removing, carry and carry out, sorry. So, this was an added sentence after our last meeting from Jenna and Beth. So, this is, I believe, was Councillor Watsonfeld, again, around the reuse and repurpose of materials. So, for projects involving site work or refurnishing, the city shall seek to restore, repurpose, or recycle materials and furniture to the extent feasible and applicable. Any discussion around this amendment? Jenna?
I just wanted to, thanks, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify that we added it in both places, because one is specific to buildings, but there are times when you're not doing a building project... that you may, for example, do a park project and refinish a bench or reuse granite blocks, you know, things like that. So we felt it was appropriate to add in both places.
Any other discussion? Move to the next item. Approvals and waivers. So this is, I think, a big chunk of our conversation last time. So I believe these are all edits. So we're going into that. I'm just going to kind of recap the whole section here. So for city projects subject to any provision of this ordinance, the purchasing agent shall certify such compliance. For projects between 100,000 and 999,999, seeking a waiver from this provision of the ordinance, the purchasing agent in consultation with applicable departments shall provide the waiver. For projects over 1 million seeking a waiver from the provision, the department responsible for this project shall request a waiver from the purchasing agent, who shall seek input and recommendation from the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee. So the purchasing agent is still granting the waiver, but they are seeking input and recommendation from the sustainability from CERC. We're also adding in the purchasing department shall document waivers requested and shall provide a report to CERC annually. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I think this reflects the intent that we had at the last meeting. I do believe that because the effective body is the city who is proposing this ordinance and the CERC Committee will work obviously with the Sustainability and Resiliency Department. So my opinion is that we should leave it as written right here.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen. I also agree. I think we had a really great conversation around that last time, but adding the final on us, onto the purchasing agent and the department to make that decision, that makes sense to me. Any further discussion? This item? So we just get into the definitions. Oh, sorry, Beth, did you have something?
Just a typo under lightweight. It should be less than in the definitions under light duty and heavy duty. Less than.
Thank you. Okay, telling me to do it. Okay. So these are just cleaning up of some definitions. So using acronyms, spelling them out, the less than, again, spelling out an acronym. Next question? Well, so everyone has access to this. And please correct me if I'm wrong here. I see Counselor Mercil is still here or Beth is still here, but I believe we can just take one vote here if there is a motion on the floor to accept the ordinance as amended during the discussion. Counselor Varela? You're on mute.
Sorry, Counselor Ricardi. I move that we accept the amendments of this ordinance.
A second.
And sorry, I have a procedure question for Beth or Counselor Mercil. So are we accepting the amendments or do we send it back to council as amended? Is it two different motions?
So you would make a motion to accept all the amendments that you made tonight, vote on that, and then you vote on recommending it as amended to the council?
Okay, thank you. I had a brain pause there for a second. So Counselor Varela moves to accept all the amendments in the ordinance as discussed this evening. Seconded by, that was Counselor Dominguez, correct?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, we'll go to roll call vote. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So amendments accepted, five to zero. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I enthusiastically move that we refer this to the city council with a unanimous and positive recommendation.
Counselor Cohen moves to refer this to the council with a positive recommendation. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Prozinski. Any more discussion before we go forward with the vote? Okay, Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Awesome. That passes unanimously, five to zero. Awesome. Okay, that's it for the two agenda items tonight. I just want to say thank you again for the great conversation. Thank you to Jenna and Beth for joining and helping us work through these items that we had still outstanding. Any further items or motions? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank every one of you through this difficult moment that I have in my personal life. But truly, your support, your kind word that you expressed to me in different manner made a difference and made me realize that you are part of my family. So thank you. I love you guys. You know how much I really appreciate the flower that you sent me, the card that I received, the message that I received from every one of you guys that made a difference. I don't know how many of you have been through this moment, but sorry, to me, this is very hard and family matter, friends matter, people who care about you matter a lot. So thank you, guys. Thank you. I just want to say that. I'm not too expressive, but this, I had to say it. I had to say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dominguez. It's good to see your face again, and I hope you were able to enjoy seeing family again, even though under the tough circumstances. And I'm thinking of you and your family. Counselor Varela?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Counselor Varela, seconded by Counselor Dominguez. Roll call vote. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Prozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned at 6:39.